Good evening and welcome.
Recording in progress.
Good evening and welcome to tonight's city council meeting. Today is Tuesday, June the 6th, 2023. The time is now 6:00 P. M. Regular meeting at the City Council, the City of Trinidad, with Malcolm Ward. Would you please rise for the pledge allegiance? Dr. Epper, would you please lead us in the pledge, please?
Of course. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Need a roll call, please?
Devono?
Here.
Greego?
Here.
Ogletree?
Here.
Shu?
Here.
Thurman?
Here.
Williamson?
Here.
Rico?
Here.
A couple of recognitions tonight. We have the Trinidad State College Basketball Team Recognition with the T. S. T. J. C. group come forward, please. Read this, and we also got a plaque here for you guys. And it says here, "The Trinidad State Trojans Men's Basketball Team has achieved an incredible feat by winning back-to-back championships in the N. G. C. A. A. Division One Region Nine Competition. This has earned them the Mayor's Award for Excellence, a prestigious award that recognizes excellence. They have made their community proud with their outstanding performance and have set an example of what hard work and dedication can achieve. This award is a testament to their determination as well as the support of their coaches and families. Trinidad State College Sports has a long and proud history of excellence. They have consistently produced outstanding athletes and teams, whether it's winning championships or producing some of the best athletes. Trinidad State College has proven time and again that they are one of the best when it comes to college sports. We look forward to future successes and we are excited about what lies ahead." And we've got some plaques here for you. And I'll read this. Get those other two, please.
Yeah, whooping over there?
I'm trying to.
Come on out. Okay, Mayor's Award for Excellence proudly presented to Trinidad State Trojans Men's Basketball Team. The Trinidad State Trojans Men's Basketball Team has achieved an incredible feat by winning back-to-back championships in the N. J. C. A. A. Division One Region Nine Competition. This has earned them the Mayor's Award for Excellence, a prestigious award that recognizes excellence in sports. They have made their community proud of their outstanding performance and have set an example of hard work, of what hard work and dedication can achieve. This award is a testament to their hard work and determination as well as the support of their coaches and families. Awarded on the June 6th, 2023. Congratulations. Thanking this, can you guys do it again next to you?
Tried to.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
We also have other recognitions tonight. They could not be here. And this was for the Trinidad High School Wrestling Awards. There's several of them that they could not be with us, but do want to be the one young man who achieved what I don't ever remember anybody achieving in the community. And it says, "We are delighted to congratulate our hometown hero, Eddie Bowman, on his remarkable achievement of becoming the champion in his sport by winning the 2023 Colorado High School Activities Association State Wrestling Championship. Eddie has worked hard and dedicated himself to reach this goal, and we are proud of him for his commitment and determination. His success is a testament to the power of hard work and perseverance. This is a huge accomplishment and marks an impressive milestone for the Trinidad Minors Wrestling Team. This championship win is a fitting reward for all the time and effort Trinidad has put into their wrestling program over the years. We are sure that this victory will serve as an inspiration for future wrestlers in Colorado, and we're looking forward to seeing what Trinidad can accomplish in the future." And I just wanted to say that it's true when it says he's an inspiration because wrestling, as we know, is a very individual sport, takes a lot of hard work, a lot of dedication, and a lot of sacrifice. And the stories that were written in the newspaper showed the sacrifices he made by getting up early, working hard, staying late, just doing what he had to do to achieve what he achieved. And he went on to the Nationals, and that's quite an achievement for someone from Trinidad to accomplish, just like the college basketball team has done a while. But I just wanted to say that I think this young man is an inspiration and should be an inspiration to the rest of his peers and Trinidad High School and do a school district number one. So congratulations to Mr. Eddie Bowman. Nisa, you want to?
You sure?
Yes.
Good evening.
Hold on, I'll tell you, I just want to give this to you.
Oh, Lord, I swear.
Okay, item two, if we go to the agenda, changes to the agenda?
Mayor, I move to rechange the agenda by moving item five on the consent agenda to further down. It would probably be this under miscellaneous business?
We'll do it to miscellaneous.
Or we could do it to listing it as item eight.
Go on, move to miscellaneous, maybe. Second. Can they call Roe on that, please?
Devono?
Yes.
Greego?
Yes.
Ogletree?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Rico?
Item three, okay, Nisa, you're up. Third time around. I see three times a charm in these.
I'm telling you. Okay, so, good evening. How are you?
We're good.
I set a little laminated card on your desktop there for you so that you can scan the QR code with your phone and download the app preview. So with the app preview, we have the first load of opt-ins in, so businesses, attractions, everybody that sent their stuff is in there. You can download the app, you can kind of play with it and test it out. When you need to create an itinerary, you'll go to wistrip.com and log in with the same registration login that you use with the app. You just have to create your itinerary on a computer. And then, once you create the itinerary, it goes to your favorites and you use it when you're writing. Usually for visitors that come into the area, as soon as they, because it's GPS-based, as soon as they hit the area within a certain range, it'll pop up a notification and ask if they want to start the itinerary for visitors. So we will be testing and adding new treks and trails. Trinidad Trail Alliance is working on recording some treks and trails to put in there that we can add to the ones that CPW has. And then, in one to two weeks after testing, we will be going hard live with the app and we'll be ready to use it. So, you know, download it, play with it, send me an email if you have any questions, and I hope you enjoy it. It's pretty cool.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
First quarter 2023 financial report, Ms. Navarette.
Evening, Mayor, Council, City Manager, Rooker, and ladies and gentlemen. Donna has set up the spreadsheet that I sent you on the landopad, and tonight I will be presenting first quarter financials for 2023.
Can you shift your line, please? Okay.
So, as always, we'll start off with our general fund revenue. At first quarter 2023, we are undercollected by $262,000, over 1.7%. If we compare to fiscal year 2022, at this time, we had collected $3.9 million, and through March 2023, we've collected $3.6, so we've collected $265,000 less than 2022 at this time. That's contributed to the marijuana decrease. We had a decrease from first quarter last year to this quarter of this year of $338,000. Sales taxes also recognized a decrease, but it's not as significant. In 2022, we collected $1.895 million, in 2023, we've collected $1.808 million. So it's an $87,000 decrease, or 4.6%. Other items that are undercollected at this time, intergovernmental revenue is undercollected by $228,000. But this category includes severance tax and grant revenues. The severance tax has been budgeted at $385,000 and the brownfields grant at $400,000. Neither of those, well, severance tax won't be recognized until September, and I believe we've only collected about $60,000 in the brownfield grant, so that's skewing the collections a little bit. And then, finally, charges for services are undercollected by $40,000. This category includes the swimming pool and development fees, building plan reviews. Development fees and building plan review projects are getting ramped up, so we'll see a decrease, excuse me, an increase in the second and third quarter, and then, obviously, swimming pool will be increasing in the next few quarters. Are there any questions on general fund revenues?
One thing that I recognize, well, let me ask Council, do you have any questions? And this is on, I notice quite a hit on the marijuana grow compared, I mean, it's hardly anything compared to what we used to have.
Yeah, that's, we'll discuss that when we get to the water fund. Yes. So we'll move on to the general fund expenditures. Thank you, Donna. Our first quarter expenditures through 20, for 2023, we'll highlight the significant over expenditures. IT, our IT department is over by $129,000, and this includes dues and subscriptions that are typically paid at the first of the year, so it's skewing that quite a bit. Also, agency support, same situation. We pay our funding for Chamber, Noah's Ark, Senior Citizens Center. We pay those at the beginning of the year, and it's over expended by $91,000, and it will level out throughout the rest of the year. This is result, this results in our expenses, excuse me, expenses being under expended by $583,000. So we're doing okay in general fund. Are there any questions?
What's the unfavorable with regard to state council?
It's due to training, and then we also pay the, what group are you in? CML dues at the beginning of the year.
Those are the ones.
Yeah, but travel is also close to over expended. I believe we budgeted $3,000, and we're about $2,500. So see how much more traveling we all do. Okay. You know, other questions? We'll move on to Power and Light. Our Power and Light, just a second. Our Power and Light first quarter revenues yielded $2.2 million, and we are $135,000 over collected. As a reminder, this fund is, this enterprise fund is seasonal, so we're recognizing the colder winter months. Also, this fund has had a rate increase, which is approximately 4.5%, and it was adopted in October of 2022. If we compare utility collections from this time last year to this time this year, we've collected, we've had a 7.7% increase. So that seems to be working toward our favor. Our expenses are over expended by $71,000, and this includes an over expenditure in distribution of $60,000. We've purchased a couple of transformers that we will be reimbursed for. These are projects that are going out, Power and Light is, has in the queue, and once we're reimbursed for them, that should bring that department more into line.
Reimbursed from where?
Jobs, so I can't remember what they're doing in the project. It would be, for example, we purchased a transformer for the hotel.
Okay.
And then they reimburse this, but they have two projects in the queue, and I don't recall what they are.
Okay.
But yes. They've also ordered extra meters for stock, and that, again, that should level out throughout the rest of the year. Our capital outlay is over expended by $140, well, it's not over expended, but it's expended by $142,000, and if you recall, that was the bucket truck purchase that we approved, I believe, in February. That will be covered by marijuana cultivation fees, and we'll transfer that later on in the quarter.
Those cultivation fees, those are the ones that have built up for the last couple of years, correct?
Are there any questions for Power and Light?
I have one. Cheryl, the revenues on miscellaneous income, it's the three-month average, 114%. What does that include, what does that include on the revenues on the miscellaneous income?
So I think that has to do with what we talked about earlier, the transformers. We have an account called miscellaneous jobbing, so we bill, when we bill for the big projects, we set it up, we schedule it as a revenue, and then upon receipt, then I'll reimburse the transformer purchase. But yes, they do have some projects in EQ, and that's miscellaneous jobbing is where we have built out those projects. And we will move on to water. Our water first quarter revenue, we are undercollected by $251,000, or 8%. And we have been having problems with this fund. We're hoping that the rate increase is going to start catching us up, but that rate increase didn't take effect until April 1st. In comparison, from this time last year to this time right now, we are $16,000 less than what we collected last year.
So what is, what do you see as the reason behind that? Have we had a lot of breaks and stuff, overtime, that type thing? Is that?
No, this is our revenue. This is our quarterly revenue. So.
We've had a cool spring, I mean, that can be a major contributor.
Yeah, that's true.
It always is undercollected at this time anyway because it is a seasonal fund, and hopefully we'll see a significant difference after the rate effects took place. I mean, rate increase took effect.
That's right.
And then on to cultivation fees. So we are undercollected by $40,000, and as you see, we adjusted the collection to $200,000 because we, Council agreed to not charge for inter, or intertransfers. Even so, we're still undercollected by $40,000. At this time last year, we had collected $304,000 versus $10,000. Wow. So that's the significant difference. Again, a lot of those grows, they cultivate in the next couple of quarters. We should see a little bit of an increase, but I'm not positive we're even going to make it close to $200,000.
Do you feel on that particular item that maybe we overextended ourselves or underextended ourselves with the amount of decrease that we allowed?
Oh, yes, I do, but we had to do it. I mean, we have a lot of these grows, they're late, they're not paying on time, they're getting assessed late fees, and they're struggling. So, I mean, I think it's what had to be done. I don't know if it was the proper amount to decrease, but something had to be done because even with this change, they're still struggling. Our expenses are undercollected by $28,000, not very significant, but you will see $209,000 for capital outlay, and that includes the engineering and design for the water main project that Mark has slated for this rest, or remainder of this year. Are there any other questions for water? All right, on to the gas fund, another fund that's seasonal. We have higher revenue collection in the first quarter just because it's the colder winter months. We are overcollected by $704,000, or 20%. Comparison from this year compared to last year, we are overcollected by $121,000, or 8.5%. The rate increase was 4%, which took effect in July of 2022. Again, this is seasonal, though, we're going to see that higher amount in the first quarter. It'll start to taper off, and then we'll really know how it's working out probably by the beginning of the fourth quarter. And then, our expenditures are over by $251,000, and that includes the obvious $269,000 in gas purchases. If there are no questions for gas, we can move on to sewer.
Do you know, it's probably a question more pertaining to gas specifically, but do we know where our reserve gas is at what capacity?
So we actually, Steve Crowe, our gas superintendent, has hired a new consultant because the consultant that we worked with last year really didn't give us the solution that we were seeking. This consultant spoke with the auditor during the audit because we're undercollected on the gas service charge. So once we get the new recommendation from our consultant, we'll have to bring that forward too to let you know what's going on with that. I don't believe the gas supply charge was increased enough, and neither did the auditor.
When do you think that might come forward?
I would guess mid-July. We should have an answer on that.
And Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Williams, I just want to make sure, your question is about reserve funding, correct, not reserve gas supply?
Well, I was curious about reserve gas supply.
Oh, my fault.
What capacity is that?
No, that's okay. And I don't think Steve's here, but I can speak to that a little bit. We have enhanced our storage considerably. I don't know the amount, but it is, I believe there's a new tank that has been installed for gas storage that we are making sure that we have adequate reserves, but I will get you guys some information on that.
And then currently, our gas supply, so whatever we have remaining at the end of 2022 was put into inventory. It was about $535,000 in storage, and right now, we have used $384,000 of that that's in storage.
The consultant that we're not going to use, is that N. M. B., that one?
Right. So I, and I misunderstood your question, I'm sorry.
That's all right.
But yes.
Was that the only concern that they have with them?
Yes. His suggestion was to use our reserves to make up the difference that we're missing in our gas supply charge amount, and it just didn't make sense. So every time we post a new invoice and the consumption, it's going the wrong way, which means our gas supply charge shouldn't have been adjusted a little bit higher. And our, the consultant is working on that. He recognized it off the bat, and he'll have a recommendation for Council, what we need to do next.
Sounds like an increase coming.
All right, so we'll move on to sewer.
Before we do that, what was that increase that we had on the gas supply? Do you remember what that was?
Oh, gosh.
Is it five?
I thought it was four.
For someone that was.
That was the increase on just the overall gas, on the gas supply charge, 2.3 to maybe 2.9, maybe? Can't quote me on that. Have to look that up. All righty, revenues for sewer in first quarter 2023 are undercollected by 7.1%. This is also a seasonal fund. It's undercollected by $170,000. In comparison to last year, though, we're kind of close to where we were. We're only $2,700 undercollected compared to last year at this time. This rate increase took effect April 1st, so we should see some significant changes in the next quarter. And then our expenses are under, under expended by $3,400. If there are no questions, we can move to the landfill.
Why is sewer seasonal?
It's, it moves in conjunction with water consumption. It's based on your water usage.
Oh, okay.
Our landfill revenues for first quarter 2023 are undercollected by 8.1%, or $62,000. $89,000 undercollected in the landfill disposal revenue. During budget time, we had considered a rate increase, and we haven't moved forward with that, so these revenues are based on a potential increase, and we're not, we hadn't increased, so it's skewed to that fact.
When was the last time we did a rate increase?
I believe it was in 2019.
I think it was 19, yeah, or 20s.
If it was recent.
Yeah, very recent.
Our capital, or our expenses are under expended by $3,700. So a significant issue for this fund is our revenues don't meet our expenses, plus the fact that we have to make these capital outlay purchases. We did purchase the dump truck for $150,000, and we don't have the revenue to cover. So this will be, this is the concern of having the landfill as a stand-alone. If we can get it moved back into the general fund, this will solve some of the problems. If not, we're going to have to consider a significant increase in rates for the landfill.
How are we going to cover that expense?
It's going to be, it's going to be over expended. So it'll be in a, it's in a deficit now, and it's just going to be more, in a bigger deficit.
Any ideas where that revenue is going to come from to cover it?
Mr. Mayor, it's just going to be reflected as a deficit, like Cheryl mentioned, so ultimately we will pay the invoice, of course, but, you know, as far as the finances look, it's going to be reflected as in the red on the budget.
We got that truck in a deal too, didn't we?
Yep, yes, it was used in the.
You had some problems with it too, right?
That's correct. It was about $38,000 over.
Right.
I had a question. Would we have to submit the issue of putting it back in the general fund to the electors?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor and Councilmember Ogletree, thanks for bringing that up. We did talk about this a little bit at the retreat, so soon we will be coming forward to you with a work session and then some action items at a council meeting over the summer to talk about valid questions, and that will be one of them we proposed to you all.
All righty, with no further questions, we'll move to the lottery fund. It's getting easier. Our lottery fund revenue collected is approximately $35,000 overcollected, and our expenses are only at 4.7%, or we've only expended $5,000. This fund, or, yes, this fund is used for parks, maintenance, trails, and the swimming pool, and all of those expenses are going to start showing up in the second and third quarters. There are no questions for lottery, we can move to tourism. Our tourism revenue collected through first quarter is $162,000. We are undercollected somewhat in lodging tax revenue. We are undercollected somewhat in lodging tax revenue. This, significant revenues are collected in the second and third quarter for lottery, but also we've put the new hotel, we've recognized revenue for the new hotel, and that's not earning revenue yet. So once that opens, it possibly could catch up. But then again, second and third quarters, we should make a significant difference. And then our expenditures in log works in tourism are over by $52,000, and that includes the purchase of the transit van, $79,000.
This is probably your department. Is that van being used?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, yes, we just finalized the process of awarding the contract to have the van wrapped with some marketing and advertising for the city, and we plan to put it into use this summer.
Okay. Thank you. We have a new fund on the books. It's the Economic Development Fund. The only activity in that fund this quarter was interest revenue. We did pay out $125,000 for East Street School in April, and it's just starting to get moving in that fund. So we'll start seeing some more activity. Also, whenever marijuana revenue is allocated for incentives, that will be recognized as well in this fund from the marijuana allocations. And finally, on to capital. Our first quarter revenue is $1.4 million. We're having significant activity in all of our projects. It includes Fox, First Street Project, Riverwalk Project, Mindlet Lake, and La Parta. We'll recognize some grant revenue for Fox revenue as the activity continues. And we're continuing to bill out some of the grants. For example, La Parta and the remainder of Space to Create. And that pretty much covers the capital fund. Any questions?
That it?
That's all.
I do have one question. Going back to general funding.
Yes.
On the sales and use taxes, you know, looking at those numbers, and is there any concern? Were, projections is there's going to be a lot of people traveling this summer? Hopefully, that'll kind of change a little bit, catch up, because we're a little behind schedule there.
We are. Our significant month of collection is July, both July and August. So we're hoping that'll catch up. We haven't been in a situation before that it's under at this time. So we just, we're monitoring it closely. We were conservative when we chose the budget figure of 8 million. But if you see in 2022, we actually hit 8.3 million. So I'm comfortable with that 8 million that we budgeted. I think we should reach it.
Actually, 1.8 right now, tied a tad under, but okay. All right, thanks, Cheryl.
All righty.
Mr. Mayor, we have one more presentation about the homeless viscoilation that Detective Lay is putting together.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Not really a presentation, more of an open invite to a meeting that we are going to be having on June 14th at the Police Department at 6 o'clock. If you can make it, we'd love for you to attend.
Who's going to present? Are you going to present? They can have the presenters as well?
So I'll present along with the city manager, and we're asked of different departments and organizations within the city to attend as an initial kickoff meeting to what the plan is moving forward.
And Mr. Mayor, Detective Lay's done a really good job of assembling a team of community members who will be at this meeting, and this is just the kickoff meeting to begin the discussions and start to collaborate and partner with others in the community on how we can help our friends in the homeless community.
Any questions for our detective?
No.
Thanks. Have a great day.
Thanks. Out of what petitions or communications are written? Mr. Root, do you have anything to read for?
Not of that, but we might have some people sign it.
Okay, Christie Carr.
Evening, Mayor.
Evening.
I'm Christie Carr. I'd like to add to your comments about South I-25 to commercial. I brought something into there just last night. I think all we need is signage. And speaking of signage, the rest area is a great place for signage. When you go to exit the rest area, there's a light there. It's a shortcut to town. It's a whole shortcut, goes past the fairgrounds, comes up to Goodard. I don't know why we couldn't have a I-25 business, but Aguirre has one, Walsenburg has one. The idea is to go on forward through by the Hollywood Bar Cafe, down under the bridge by the Hilton, all up to the street for the back streets there, and up to Main Street, trails in, and to the downtown, which is, so I'd just like to add two suggestions. There's already a light. At that exit, you go right to get back on. You can do an I-25 business, a shortcut to Trinidad. The roads are good. They're around 35 miles an hour. So overall, I think all we need is signage. And I believe that businesses would be happy to do that, especially the Hilton. It's probably the most disruptive, the Hilton. And state signs, fairgrounds, and shortcuts. That's what I like to say.
Okay, thanks for leaving again.
Thank you.
Okay, Sarah, can you grab?
Good evening. I was going to prepare something, but I've been pushing wheelbarrows full of concrete in the rain all day. So you'll have to bear with me. The sixth month, the sixth day, the sixth hour today, Trinidad is visited by Satan himself on Main Street. But you all know that because you created an event for it on your Facebook page. Cannibalism, murder, Satan, misery, and the joys of death will be celebrated tonight on Main Street and Trinidad Polare. But you all know that because you created the event on your Facebook page. And your employees, or our employees, some perverts, put this up on the page for us to read. It says here, "You don't want to miss this special Tuesday show for this rocking touring band." So this event was made by our newly hired Development Services and City Planning Director. I don't know her personally. Is this the kind of people we hired in Trinidad to work for us? Are you guys happy to have this kind of event on Main Street? Do you celebrate cannibalism and murder? Satan misery and the joys of death? Is this where our town has come to? Is this what the city of Trinidad, the people they hired, that they put on the websites, and they push on all of us? This has been up since May 11th on your Facebook page. How much money are my tax dollars going to pay this person and everyone else's? Is this what, is this what our money, is this what is this budgeted? Cannibalism, murder, misery, the joys of death? I'm not up here to discuss this because there isn't a discussion about it. There is no middle ground to be found here. This needs to be fixed. I talked to a lot of people, a lot of people. No one is happy about this, from all different faiths and backgrounds. Not one person thinks this is good, except our city planning director, apparently, who thinks we don't want to miss this special Tuesday show. So this is not going to end here with any comments from you or anyone else. This is just starting. The bear has been poked, and everyone is pissed off. I'm surprised there's not 300 people lined up behind me who care enough to say something about this. So I'm going to give you all a minute or two to publicly announce this event.
You know, it's customary when we have people come to talk, like yourself, who mentions that. We don't comment on that.
It's customary, but it's also, you can comment if you want to. I know the rules.
No, that's the position that we've been advised, and we don't. But Mr. Mayor, before I do that, we will take that under advisement test.
I'm going to speak, please.
I will. We will take that under advisement as to how to handle that later on. Talk to council already and our city manager.
Mr. Mayor, I respect, you know, the rules of decorum that we have. I really do. But this is an issue that I'm not going to stand idly by.
Thank you.
I will fully, wholeheartedly, without reservation, endorse what you're saying. Absolutely.
And also, what do you, Council, what do you have to say?
Well, Mayor, you allowed council members to speak.
I appreciate that. You know, ignorance isn't defense in the law. I did not have, I don't have Facebook. I don't follow social media. When this was brought to my attention yesterday, I took some action. And I want to say that publicly. I, I am, without, I have no words to express the outrage I feel about the association of our document page, and I have no reservation to say anything.
So you have one minute left, just so you know, in the five minutes.
I would like to contribute.
Okay.
Why start it?
I'd like to apologize. They talked to me yesterday about it, and I didn't know about it. And like I say, ignorance, but I agree with you 100%. It was ridiculous. It should have never happened. And I hope we can get that fixed. And we have, I've talked to several of the councilmen after I talked to you, and we'll see what we can do. And I did talk to the city manager. And we'll, we'll definitely get it fixed.
I would never approve of anything like this. I knew about this yesterday, and I was appalled that, you know, the devil doesn't need an extra outfit in Trinidad. Well, I apologize as well. Want to reclaim my time?
No, you have one minute, so that didn't kill me. Any other comments?
Need to get this thought. It's the first I'm hearing of it, so.
I heard about it last night, and I was disturbed. Just let you know. It really was.
Well, this will not be swept under the rug. I am just but one person. Many behind me. Okay? It's not going to go away. We're calling for the immediate release of the people responsible for this for a start. Thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you.
And in response to the God is Dead 2023 tour going on tonight, Christ is risen.
Amen. We've got a couple items here that, letters that we received. One from the advocates against domestic assault, Mayor Phil Rico, it's Trinidad City Council members. Advocates against domestic assault, thank you for the monetary support for our agency. The funds are critical to continue to support violence services to victims of domestic violence. Such assault and injury. 2023 marks the ADA's twentieth year of service for our county and city. We are tremendously grateful for your continued support. That was from the Charlene Porters, the executive director of the ADA. And they got this letter. Thank you for your support for the first year. This is from the Keep Trinidad Safe, and that was the money that the city released through the city, back to the Trinidad Community Foundation received it. Collects, helps build, have built, fought, came a couple years ago. Says, "Thank you for your support. This first year has been such a learning experience. We were able to serve 213 youth through prevention programming and 28 with our complete wraparound service. Imagine this coming year will be even better." That would be Marcy, Jeremy, and there's no way he's safe. So that's in Trinidad community or keeping Trinidad safe. And there's a letter from last week that I just emailed. Send those over to the staff. Also got this, sitting on my desk tonight, joyride bike to work day, Wednesday, June 28th, 2023. And it says, "Registered now bike to work day. Enjoy your ride." So if you want to post that.
Sorry, sorry.
I did not know, so I'm glad the word's going to be easy.
Item 5, consent agenda approval. We will be ready in minutes. File it 16/20/23. Item B, application for mention of Park Park Robinson Community Center at 911 Robinson Avenue for July 8th, September 8th, and September the 23rd, 2023. Mr. Paula, or someone who is representing, thank you, Virginia. Item C, approval of special events permit application, malt venues and spirituous, filed by Trinidad Los Angeles County Chamber of Commerce at the Mayan Commercial Street Intersection, June 9th through 10th. That's this weekend. That's the Santa Fe Trail Festival. Ms. Rosetti, are you here? She's here. Thank you, Virginia. Appreciate it. Item D, transfer of the ownership of driver license filed by Sexy Pizza 5 LLC. Doing business as Sexy Pizza at 516 East Elm Street. Formerly Foxy Nima's LLC, doing business at Grandma's House. Set for public hearing on June 20th, 2023 at 6:00 PM. And Mr. Kavan, Calabria, are you here tonight?
He's not, but I am. Kyle Peters.
Kyle Peters?
Yep.
Item E, approval of temporary permit application filed by Sexy Pizza 5 LLC. Doing business as Sexy Pizza at 516 Elm Street. It's part of the item D. And we moved item F, which was the Fox West, to the J-E. And item G, approval of the bills of the amount of $2,152,509.59 and 67 cents. Approval of the payroll, May 23rd through June 9th, 2023, and the amount, we have two paid periods in there. One's for $450,063.30, and one's for $443,476.10. You take a motion?
Second.
Okay. Call vote, call vote, please.
Tabano?
Yes.
Kriega?
Yes.
Ogletree?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Williamson?
No.
Rico?
Yes.
Item 6, public hearing. 6A, new hotel, new hotel and restaurant, liquor license filed by Galardi's by M Square Cafe LLC, doing business as Galardi's 489 at 201 Americana Road. Hearing is now open. Do we have someone from M Square here tonight, representing?
Hello.
Do you swear the man, please?
Will you raise your hand? Do you swear in front of testimony or about telling us the truth?
The truth, the whole truth.
The truth, if I can get that.
State your names, please.
Susan Vlad.
John Peter.
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Thanks, members. Good evening.
Hello.
Nice meeting you both.
Nice meeting you both.
I spoke to you on the phone.
Yes.
Okay. And I'm going to ask you a number of questions. Please let me know if you don't understand any of the questions that I ask you, okay? So you are here representing the applicant, that is, Galardi's by M Square Cafe LLC.
Correct.
Going to be doing business as Galardi's 489.
Correct.
Okay, and this is the hotel and restaurant application for the Hilton Hotel?
Correct.
Okay, and that's at 201 Americana Road?
Correct.
In Trinidad. Okay. And again, hotel and restaurant liquor license application. The two of you make up the limited liability company that is going to be the license holder of your group. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, I believe you, ma'am. Okay, I believe you, ma'am, own ninety-one percent, and you, sir, own the remaining nine percent.
Correct.
Okay, and because of that, Mayor and Council, Ms. Flat was the only one that was required to submit for a background investigation, which of course did come back clear, and that is part of the council packing. So to begin, and so I don't just ask a bunch of boring questions, is there anything you want to tell council? I mean, we kind of understand what you're, you're proposing, but you own a current, a restaurant currently in Trinidad, is that correct?
Correct. Currently, we own M Square Cafe and Food Corp, the marketplace, and we're also about to open up Eli's Wings and Things, also in the marketplace.
Okay. Same ownership structure?
Correct.
Okay, and ninety-one and nine percent.
You know, the ownership structure for the offsite locations from the hotel are even, even split under a different LLC.
Okay, okay, thank you. So you're gonna be running the hotel and restaurant for the Hilton Hotel? Okay, and I know I kind of already asked that, sorry. You understand that's a pretty big responsibility, right? I mean, I know as part of your application, the liquor license is going to cover the entire hotel, the entire hotel, right?
Correct.
Okay, but you understand that you're responsible for all that, right? And it's gonna be your liquor license.
Yes.
Okay, we'll, we'll get to that in a moment, but if I could, please, so you're, you, you're renting from, you're not really a landlord, it's a sublease, correct?
Correct.
It's a five-year lease from Trinidad Hotel Management LLC?
Correct.
Who in, who, they are renting from Kip Hampton LLC. You're not here to answer questions about them, but they're, of course, the owner operator of the new Hilton Hotel, right?
It's a property.
Okay, okay, thank you. And the, the lease is for a five-year time period for the consideration that is set forth in the lease agreement?
Yeah, correct.
Okay. Now, Ms. Flat, I, I want to ask you, ma'am, because I, I talked to you about this on the phone. It is correct, is it not, that you have not, sorry, that was not a good question, but you have not been on a liquor license before, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, have you, sir?
Yes.
Okay, so you understand that if you are approved, you're going to be required to have a knowledge of all, you know, the liquor laws in the seat of Colorado, and also the liquor code for the city of Trinidad. You understand that?
Yes.
Okay, and you understand, again, if you're approved, that you can't have any liquor violations. If you do, you could lose your liquor license again if you are approved. You understand that?
Yes.
Okay, so I want to ask you, how many employees are you hoping to have when you're up and running and in full operation, full steam? Go.
So between twenty-five and thirty full-time and in part-time employees.
Okay.
Of, of those, fifteen to eighteen of them would be serving alcohol service oriented. So busboys, hostess staff, those guys wouldn't be alcohol oriented, but everybody else would be.
Okay.
Of that twenty-five and thirty.
Are you familiar with tips training?
Yes, sir. All of our, all of our, our leadership team is here today, and all of our leadership team will be required for tips as well as national servicing alcohol training for management. And then all of our employees will be tip, tipped training.
Okay. And it, it was touched on earlier, that is, when the Hilton Hotel is going to be opening. Do you have any idea when you're hoping to be, I, I know you're beholden to the large.
Right, so three to four days significantly after, after they're open, we hope to, to be in line with them. Their projected date at this point in time is the twenty-first of June, which puts us food operationally wise, we can get in there, but alcohol operationally wise, that puts us at a tight timeline. With approval from you guys and from the state, we're, we're looking at probably right around that time to, to introduce that portion of the food and beverage portion of the hotel.
Okay.
There is an opportunity for us to be open prior to the licensing for alcohol for the food portion of the food and beverage portions of the hotel.
Okay, you understand you can't sell alcohol until you have your state and your local licenses?
Probably don't even have alcohol.
Yeah, you don't have the ability to.
Okay, okay, but you, you can't do it until you have your local and state licenses, okay.
Yes, sir.
And I, I didn't let you talk about your, you know, what you're going to be doing, and, but is there anything you want to tell council? You don't have to, about your operation and.
I'm much better speaker.
So we're, we're going to be a full service establishment. We'll operate sixteen hours a day, seven days a week, breakfast, lunch, and dinner with the extensive catering menu as well. So we'll operate the food and beverage portion of the hotel, all of the eating space, all of the outdoor, indoor and outdoor, I guess, what you would call amusement facilities, and then all of the retail establishment in, within the hotel as well. So all of the grab and go food items, all of the coffee stations, all of those things will be under our running.
And then last couple of questions, if I could, please. You had a petition circulated in support of this application? You have to answer out loud.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I deserve that, I did, yeah, yeah. Okay, so you had a petition circulated, and you understand, I believe you had a hundred and one valid signatures. One was a no.
Correct.
A hundred were yes, and, and you had that petition circulated.
Correct.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate that. Anything else you want to say?
We look forward to the opportunity to, to be in the community more than what we already are. We're excited about the growth, excited about the, what revenue is gonna bring to the city with the hotel and with the recognition of the names and things, the history and the town. So we're really excited to, to be a part of that and moving forward.
Thank you. Just one last question, that is, I want to make sure you understand that if approved, you understand you have an ongoing obligation to cooperate with city officials, right? Fire chief, police chief, city manager, city clerk, city attorney. You know, reasonable requests, you guys agree to cooperate with the city for, for reasonable requests and inspections and things of that nature.
Correct.
Okay, good. Mayor, council member, side, turn it over again.
Any questions?
I don't have any questions, but I wish you luck.
Thank you.
You have done such a, a great job at the Food Corp.
Thank you.
It's a breath of fresh air to go in there. I'm a frequent customer, but good luck.
Thank you.
I, I just wanted to be clear on the, the diagrams that you submitted, exhibit A and exhibit B that are, that are this one and this one. The yellow highlighted area are the, are the areas that are intended to be covered by the liquor permit?
Yes.
Yes.
So you can serve, with this, you can serve alcohol anywhere in the hotel? Is that, makes it live what we're saying?
That's correct.
Okay, so that would be like if somebody gets room service, or if they're out by the pool, or?
So it's done away with the actual alcohol going to the room. We are contactless now, so everything is picked up at the front desk.
Okay.
So anything that goes up to a room, someone has to actually come down, present an identification, and all of those things.
Okay.
Before they can be taken up by room service, even by a digital order, that's no longer available.
Okay, so like at the grab and go place is what you're talking about?
Uh huh, and both the grab and go and room service both have POS accessibility from the front desk.
Okay, thank you.
Good question.
Congratulations, man.
Thank you.
Thank you for putting so much good into Trinidad. We appreciate that.
Yeah, thank you very much, and good luck. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you both.
Anyone in the audience or listening virtually, speak for or against the liquor license advocate? Hearing none. Hearing is well closed. Need a motion for, to approve the new hotel and restaurant liquor license filed by Galardis by M Square Cafe LLC doing business as Galardis four eighty-nine at two oh one Americana Road. You entertain a motion, so move second. For the discussion. Hearing none, call vote.
Tabano?
Yes.
Criega?
Yes.
Ogletree?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes. Findings, please.
Okay. In matter of Galardis by M Square Cafe LLC DBA Galardis four eight nine, two oh one Americana Road, Trinidad, Colorado, eight one zero eight two, new hotel and restaurant. This matter came for a hearing on the application of Galardis by M Square Cafe LLC DBA Galardis four eighty-nine at two oh one Americana Road in Trinidad, Colorado, for a new hotel and restaurant license before the city council of the city of Trinidad, Colorado, acting in its capacity as the local licensing authority on June sixth, twenty twenty-three, in city council chambers and city hall. The city council, having reviewed the application and supporting documents and reports of the city clerk and other city staff, petitions admitted into evidence at the hearing and testimony taken during the hearing, makes the following findings. One, the neighborhood consists of that area located within the city's corporate limits. Two, Susan Flat and John McEachin testified in favor of granting the license. No other persons testified in favor of or in opposition to the granting of the license. Three, the city clerk's report showed that there are forty-five liquor licensed outlets within the neighborhood. Of these, there are six fermented malt beverage on premises licenses, one fermented match beverage on premises license, one club license, fifteen hotel and restaurant licenses, six liquor store licenses, ten tavern licenses, one arts license, two beer and wine licenses, and three lodging and entertainment licenses. Four, the applicant submitted a petition containing four petition sections regarding the liquor license application. Petitions contain one hundred and one total valid signatures, of which one hundred residents or businesses, business representatives from within the neighborhood twenty-one years of age or older, in favor of issuance of a liquor license at this location. One individual signed in opposition to its issuance, no remonstrances were submitted. Five, the applicant through testimony and other evidence made a prima facie showing that the reasonable requirements of the neighborhood are not being met by existing liquor license outlets, and that the adult inhabitants of the neighborhood favor issuance of the license. Six, based on the evidence presented at the hearing and the investigative materials provided for the hearing, the city council finds that the reasonable requirements of the neighborhood are not being met by the existing liquor establishments, that the adult inhabitants of the neighborhood favor issuance of the license to the applicant, and that the applicant officers are of satisfactory moral character. Therefore, the city of Trinidad, I'm sorry, the city council of the city of Trinidad, Colorado, as the local liquor licensing authority, hereby approves the application of Galardis by MC's, M Square Cafe LLC DBA Galardis four eight nine at two oh one Americana Road in Trinidad, Colorado, for the city council issued this sixth day of June twenty twenty-three.
Thank you. And good luck to you, and we'll continue when you open.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, item six B, public hearing for consideration of ordinance repealing Trinidad municipal code, chapter fourteen, planning and zoning, and reenacting and adopting by reference city of Trinidad municipal code, chapter fourteen, Trinidad land use code. Hearing is now open. Mr. Hearing?
Evening, Mayor and Council. How's it going? It's been nine months since we started the process of looking at the land use code, the qualified strategies. With tonight's adoption, if it happens, this will be our eighth qualified strategy of a dollar grant. And we were only required to do three, and so the city has much exceeded expectations of what we set out to do. I think a lot of the qualified strategies we were able to implement are shown through with some of the commitments we've seen with the Housing Now program, as well as the conversations we're having with the developing community about trying to create expedited review procedures to this, this amendment. You know, I presented this at the last meeting, and I'd be happy to answer any questions. The version you have is the clean version, so it took a long time to get that formatted, but it's worth it. We did catch one small typo in the appeals section of the variance. I was citing the previous board of appeals section, and it moved. But those small citations, I am gonna come through one last quick time to make sure that I didn't miss another appeals section, citing one fourteen instead of fourteen, fourteen, the board of appeals, which is the city council. But other than that, I think we've gotten to a clean version. If enacted today, it takes effect ten days after, so June sixteenth. We know that we intend to do two things at the next meeting. Unfortunately, I won't be present for, but you will need to adopt a new fee schedule by resolution. Again, hopefully those fees will, again, be done in a manner that promotes development and continues the successes of trying to get more housing in the community, and also the certified zoning map. The certified zoning map was outside of my purview, but was part of the grant dollars. And I am happy to report that that zoning map is, is gonna be up to date and available to the public again, which will be great resource as well. Very excited to see that happen as well. So I think after tonight, you know, it's really nice to be able to put a nice big checkbox on the success of, of what we've been able to accomplish over the past months.
Okay. Questions, Mark?
I'm not gonna let you get away with that. I want to thank you, Michael, for doing all this. I know it was a lot of hard work, and, and also the people that were on the board. And, and I think it will really help us, the city of Trinidad, and I know you were telling me that this is your last deal for the grant, that it's over with, but I hope that you, like you said, come back and do some work for us, and, and like I said, I think everybody really appreciates what you've done with the housing and this, and I'd like to personally thank you. Thank you.
That's great. I just wonder, are you gonna give us some input on the fee schedule?
I, I have worked with staff, and so that's, yes, I, I have. And so that what you'll see is involved my input on the fee schedule, so what I will say is that you have to balance the cost of running the department versus being development friendly, but again, the idea behind the updates to the fee schedule is that this also relieves a lot of administrative burdens because we've reduced the amount of meetings necessary, so fees cover costs, right? And so our hope is that by reducing the amount of different things that we have to do and being able to concurrently process applications, we can reduce the fees as well.
Are, have you gotten any feedback from the development community that's against these changes at all, or?
You know.
Issues that have been raised?
I haven't. And I haven't heard anything. Actually, I think what I have heard is that a lot of folks are anxious to get their applications in because of wanting to get moving forward, and then waiting, waiting for this, because it is a lot less intensive as far as having to do multiple applications for some of these, some of these applications.
Okay, that's all.
And Mr. Mayor, council member Ogletree, I might add, a lot of the changes you see actually came from feedback from the development community as well. So it's, it's us trying to be accommodating to what they're asking for us.
How many advocates are we looking at now? We started out pretty slow, so.
Are we talking about Housing Now or development stuff? You know, I couldn't speak to the exact number, but I know in talking with the staff today, they had three or four applications that will probably proceed in July, now that the new code is, I also think the fees have been, I don't want to say prohibitive, but they are, they're quite large from what I've seen in other communities. So I think this, again, the reduction in the number of meetings, because your, your current fee schedule, if I was doing a minor subdivision and a conditional use, I have to pay both fees. Now, if I'm doing something like that, I pay one fee for limited impact review, it's one meeting. And again, from the staff side, they only have to do one posting in the paper for that application. Now I only have to do one posting on the site.
I remember our first work session when you came, and it was a, it was quite a meeting from what I remember, but I'm I'm sure come along the way, I share councilman Shu's perspective, but I really do appreciate what you've done here, and hopefully we'll see you in the future, so, thank you.
And Mike, like, you know, I appreciated the time today. You and I spent about an hour today going over some of the items that you covered, and some items that you didn't cover, but you gave some good information. some items that you didn't cover, but you gave some good information on it. Thank you for that. One thing that he mentioned is that he spent like forty-eight hours, I guess.
Yeah.
Reading. So it was quite an intense, quite intensive, so.
It's two hundred and eighty-seven. When you got to go through it one time, you sit, sit there with one red bull and then you put aside.
Two red bulls, three red bulls. Yeah. But anyway, I want to say thank you. You did a lot of work and to kind of get us reoriented to where we need to be and make it sort of less complicated for developers in the future. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mike. Okay. Anyone listening in virtually or in the audience wants to speak of the ordinance repeal? Hearing is now closed. B one, second reading of ordinance repealing Trinidad Municipal Code, Chapter fourteen, planning and zoning, and reenacting and adopting by reference City of Trinidad Municipal Code, Chapter fourteen, Trinidad Land Use Code. Entertainer motion?
Sound move.
Second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Call vote, please.
Debono?
Yes.
Criego?
Yes.
Ogletree?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Rico?
Adam seven, unfinished business. We have him. I made Miss Lane's business. A memorial resolution acknowledging the contributions of Joseph A. Riordan upon his passing. I'll read the resolution first. Memorial resolution of the City Council of the City of Trinidad, Colorado, acknowledging the contributions of Joseph A. Riordan upon his passing. Whereas Almighty God in His infinite wisdom has seen fit to take Joseph A. Riordan for this earthly life, and whereas Joseph A. Riordan faithfully served the people of the City of Trinidad as a member of City Council in nineteen seventy-nine and from two thousand and two thousand to two thousand and two. He also served as mayor of the City of Trinidad from two thousand and two to two thousand and ten, and again from two thousand and fourteen to two thousand and sixteen. And whereas during his lifetime, Joseph A. Riordan served our country as a staff sergeant in the Colorado National Guard from nineteen fifty-two to nineteen sixty-two, a school principal from nineteen sixty-eight to two thousand and one, president of the Trinidad Education Association and the Trinidad Administrator Association, chairman of the Los Angeles County Democratic Central Committee, president of Trinidad State Junior College Advisory Council, and president of the Holy Trinity Credit Union. And whereas upon his passing of Joseph A. Riordan, the City of Trinidad wishes by this resolution to acknowledge his many contributions to the community and to express his regret and sorrow to the family of Joseph A. Riordan. Now therefore be resolved by the City Council of the City of Trinidad, Colorado, that the mayor and City Council do hereby extend their condolences to the family of Joseph A. Riordan, and by this resolution do hereby remember the many outstanding contributions he made to the Trinidad community. Be further resolved that this resolution shall become a part of the official minutes of proceedings of the City of Trinidad, of the Trinidad City Council, and a copy of the same shall be provided to the family of Joseph A. Riordan, introduced and read and adopted this sixth day of June twenty twenty-three. Philip T. Rico, Mayor. Aaron Ogletree, Mayor of Proton, Proten. Karen Gregel, Councilmember. Franklin Schu, Councilmember. Eli Debono, Councilmember. Lehman Thurman, Councilmember. Aaron Williamson, Councilmember. Entertainer motion? A resolution? Second? Okay. Motion on the second? Any discussion, any thoughts? Call vote, please.
Debono?
Yes.
Criego?
Yes.
Ogletree?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes.
Item B eight B, appointment of the Corazon in Trinidad to start Main Street district of board members. We have, we have actually four open available positions, right? We did have three people that applied, Megan Creach, Colita Sheldrick, and Lauren Hoffman. Are you in the, here tonight?
Megan is electronic, and Colita and Lauren are having some connectivity issues. They can reschedule if that's okay with you.
Entertainer motion? Sound move. Second?
Second.
Any consideration, any thoughts? Any questions?
I'll tell you, we're very qualified when we interviewed them and enthusiastic, and I'm excited to see what they're going to bring.
No question.
Okay. Call vote, please.
Debono?
Yes.
Criego?
Yes.
Ogletree?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes. Item T, consideration of Sunflower Valley Water Association contract renewal. Entertainer motion? Sound move. Second?
Second.
Mr. Viall?
Good evening, Council. Mayor.
B.
Now the upward consideration and approval to renew the Sunflower Valley Water Association contract. From what my understanding, the Sunflower Valley Water Association contract, when they put in for a loan or a grant, they need X amount of water taps to qualify for this. When they got this, some of the members were allowed to buy extra additional water taps. I think that's where the issue was. If the association would have bought the water taps, the afterwater taps, it would have been a non-issue. But since members were allowed to buy some extra taps in case that kid's growing, in the association, a lot of these customers, their parcels are several hundred acres, not just small little parcels. So if they had children, they wanted to have an additional tap in case any of their children wanted to build on those places, which would be fine. But as time went on, the other people bought property out there, and they didn't have the ability to get water tap. So some of the members went and sold one of those taps to one of the other members, all within the association. Or some of the members decided they didn't want to sell them, but they would lease some of water tap. In the event one of their children grew up, they would still have that tap to their building. So what we've done is I've had a request for eleven additional water taps. Of those eleven, there were five that are currently being leased to property owners that belong to other owners. And part of the problem is when they did this, they were given to the members as in the form of a water certificate. And that's where the problem was. It's just a water certificate. This is kind of a floating water tap in the association instead of being tied to the parcel like we do now. So what we've done over the past year, I've had this request since pre-July of last year. We've been working on this. That, the board presidents are present if we have any additional questions. I've been asked to vote at a board meeting for a question asked for some of the members. And everything went very well. They were just, the contract was twenty-six years ago. They have a forty-year contract. It was back in nineteen ninety-seven. They have fourteen years left remaining on the existing contract. So before we could move forward and bring any additional water tap to council, we had to clean it up, which the board had been very proactive in doing and willing to do so because it's caused a lot of confusion. So since then, I have exhibited with seventy-six pages of all the property owners. They have now attached the water taps to the parcels, so they're no longer on water certificates. So everything is attached accordingly. We ran them by our Madeline Wallace, our Lions, Giannis Attorney, Water Act Attorney. Everything is up to plan. Now, as you know, we've been renewing some of the existing water association contracts, and we're using kind of the same template because a lot of these association contracts are all different, and they really shouldn't be. We're kind of using the same template for all of them, just like we just did the Starfield Water Association contract. We did the Dr. Water Association contract. And now they, the Sunflower Valley Water Association, has put a lot of KPL effort into correcting this. They're no longer doing water certificates. All their taps are being connected to their parcels where they can no longer move them. If they, if they choose to do that, they'll have to follow our existing water tap transfer policies, like what's in our ordinance. The new contract spells all that language out clearly now, as well as the rents. So what we're requesting is eleven additional water taps now. Five of those will go to the existing customers that have taps, but they're leasing from some of the other members. Those taps will go back to those parcels and be attached to those parcels. And then they have an additional six residences that are requesting tap. A lot of those homes are already there, and they are either hauling water, they have systems, and they just want a permanent tap for that. That gets them up to the two hundred and three from one hundred and ninety-two to two hundred and three, which at one point in time, their system was designed to handle up to, I believe, two hundred and fifty taps. So they're within their, their limit. If you have any other questions, like I said, Ron James and the Sunflower Valley Water Association President here, if you have any questions or questions?
Nice questions, I know, I know.
Are you, do you have, are you comfortable with this, these changes that we're making?
I am now. It brings them completely up to speed with our other association contracts. The language and the agreement that you have in front of you spells everything out now, and they put a lot of work and effort into getting up to speed with our existing ordinances. Everything's in there now. They, I am comfortable with that, though, so, unlike what it was before, so. And their, their board has been very proactive in wanting to get this done right. That's why I have not came forward and given them a timeline, like you have thirty days or ninety days to get within compliance, because it was in the form of water certificates rather than, if the association had bought, purchased after taps, it would be a non-issue because then they'd have a pool of after taps. If a member wanted a tap, they could have told them, they would have held them on hand. But the members were allowed to purchase, and that's where the issue came. But it's been cleaned up since then, so that's why I'm bringing it forward to council now.
So there will be no more leasing?
No more. That's.
Are we giving them, would it be to our advantage to give them a couple extra taps to the association? Would this would take care of it?
Yeah, I don't want to get into the same issue where we have now. I'd want an afterpool of taps painted out there, and so we can get into that again. So what we'll do with the other associations, if someone after this decides they want a tap, then they'll have to fill out this water tap application process, come before council, amend the contract, and then it'll be up to you whether to give the additional water taps or not. The eleven taps have already been paid for by the Sunflower Water Valley Association, not the member requesting them. So everything's going to be, go straight through the association now. So we already have received the checks. They paid in advance for them through the association.
Where is this?
The Sunflower Valley?
Yeah.
Their water tap is by the east Cougar Canyon entrance, right before you get to the wagon go. Their water association goes completely out east on Highway three fifty, one sixty.
What, I know you've talked about that we've now associated taps with the actual parcels, but what other than that is going to keep the same thing from happening so that there, I mean, I kind of feel like the cities do some restitution because they were selling water, they were benefiting from something that we were providing to and selling it.
That was part of the problem. Like I said, it was due to the fact that they were given water certificates instead of the association buying the tap. The members were allowed to buy them. Our water associations, when they, once it goes through the meter, rebuild for the meter, they're allowed to charge extra for maintenance fees. They to charge whatever they've decided to charge for their water monthly billing to occur. Like I said, what with this new agreement, that can no longer happen because if anybody else from that association wants to request a water tap, we have a water tap application form they need to fill out, and it requires they have a septic permit from the public server over the county. They have to show us the deed, they have to show us that they own the land, and they have to prepay for the water tap. So, and then, once it's accepted, it gets added to the, to their parcel.
Who does the physical installation of the tap?
Out there, they have their ORC, the Operating Responsible Charge. If it's not them, they have people they contract. Some, like Starfield, don't have anybody that make taps, so the City of Trinidad will actually go, they'll hire an excavator to go excavate around the water vein. The City of Trinidad will charge them to go make the physical tap on the pipeline. We pull out, and then they have, their plumber actually runs the water service line. But we know who's making the taps out there. They have to fill out the application form from us. In some situations, we make the tap where they can hire an outside source to come and make the tap.
Are we going to have more oversight of this than, than we have in the past?
Oh, definitely. With this new agreement, we'll have complete oversight of everything, so.
Okay. Thank you.
No questions? That sounds like everybody got tidied up.
Yeah, it's trying, so.
So I just had a couple of quick questions that I think is probably more in general. Does every water association, they all have a master meter then?
Yes, they do.
So if they go for, say, a hundred gallons in a month, and the association only bills for sixty, the association pays for the missing four?
That's correct.
And then the other question I had, is a, is a tap treated basically the same way that a meter is? There's backflow prevention on, on that, or not necessarily?
Yeah, all our consecutive systems, our water association has got backflow prevention on them. That is correct.
Okay.
Yeah, that keeps, it, some of them may be at a higher elevation, and if they go to water main break, without the proper backflow prevention, it can actually get into our potable water supply. So they all have to have a true backflow prevention.
I have no further questions, Mayor.
I'm glad to hear that you're clearing this up because, you know, I talked to somebody about a year and a half ago about some of the problems that existed out there and some of the resale of the water taps were getting, were just exorbitant. And it was, it was concerning, and I don't know how much oversight we had, and I'm glad that we're bringing it back to work because, do you know what the fees that they'll be charging for the taps right now?
Well, we charge it what they charge.
What they will be charging?
We don't have no control of what they charge. We will charge our current planned estimate fees that we have in our ordinance that we just passed. What they charge is outside of our box.
And that's where I think the problem was before, is that I was hearing that they were selling some of these taps for just ridiculous amounts.
That's quite possible.
And they didn't know how accurate that was, but that's what they're just.
But from this day moving forward, they'll have to pay our current planned estimate fee, and that will be awarded on an individual basis. We don't want to give them a pool of taps for any association to have to, because then that's what tends to happen.
Any other, any other questions? No. Call vote, please.
Debono?
Yes.
Criego?
Yes.
Ogletree?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Rico?
Item E, resolution authorizing expenditure of marijuana revenue received by the City of Trinidad first quarter of twenty twenty-three. Entertainer motion?
Sound move.
Second?
Second.
Sure.
All right. During our work session, we discussed city projects that were presented by city staff. First quarter twenty twenty-three yielded four hundred and eleven thousand, seven hundred and seventy-nine dollars. Sixty-five percent of that was scheduled for city projects, and we, which brings it to a hundred and seventy thousand, one hundred and fifty-seven dollars. You have the resolution before you that breaks out all of the projects presented by staff. And then thirty percent is scheduled to go to the rainy day fund, which is seventy-eight thousand, five hundred and thirty-three dollars. Four percent will go to the incentive share or the economic development fund, and that totals ten thousand, four hundred and seventy-one dollars. And then finally, one percent share is distributed to the community, Trinidad Community Foundation, at two thousand, six hundred and eighteen dollars for a total of four hundred and eleven thousand dollars in allocations.
Questions from council?
No questions from me.
Thank you. Questions on this? Questions?
No questions?
No questions? Okay, no questions. Call vote, please.
Debono?
Yes.
Criego?
Yes.
Ogletree?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes. Item E, that was for the approval of the change order sixteen and seventeen for the Fox West, the amount of six hundred and two thousand, six hundred and eighty-nine dollars and fifty-nine cents. These funds were from BOLA and CCI, the glass replacement, replacement for one, two, three, four, five, five different window items. And what's interesting on that is that they say that in the end, that these, this glass will be on the inside of the building. They're not going to be exterior glass in the end. So the cost of, I'm not sure what that breakdown of the cost is. So the cost, I don't know what that breakdown of the cost is. I don't think we have anybody here from, as what that cost would be doing.
No, Mr. Mayor, I don't believe Mr. Gabrielson is here. Uh, what I can tell you, though, is that we do have the funding for this. This has been reviewed by the architecting um, connection with the contractor, um, as well as urban neighborhoods. They've all been involved in these processes. But certainly, we could postpone this item and ask for, um, it to be considered at the next meeting and ask Mr. Gabrielson to come here to answer questions.
And the reason why I bring that up is because it says if they just repaint and refinish the item, they'd be like four-hundred-and-seventy-five dollars per window. And if they were a new window, probably it's going to be two to three thousand dollars per window. So the cost savings there, and if they're going to eventually end up on the inside of the building, what's the point? And putting that kind of money where maybe they could take that savings allocated to something else. That's the reason why I bring this up, so.
Sure.
If we delay this, are we coming?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I don't believe so, and Councilmember Williamson, no. So if we, I, I think our next meeting is June twentieth. We could postpone it to that meeting.
Good, okay. So we need a motion. We need a, well, we need a motion to table?
Motion to postpone.
Postpone, okay. A motion, uh, make a motion to postpone this until June twentieth?
Yeah, June twentieth.
Second?
Second.
Did call a vote on that?
Devono?
Yes.
Criego?
Yes.
Olutri?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes. And whoever made the motion, if they wanted to rescind that, please, uh, who made the motion? Yeah, rescind that, please.
The motion to table?
Table, yeah.
Oh, Mr. Mayor, I, I, yeah. So no motion to table. I'll yield to you to less, but you've made a motion to postpone. You have an active, um, motion on the table as well, but we're just delaying the vote on that. Do they need to rescind the actual motion to approve?
I, you can rescind, just if you don't mind, Councilman Shu, just a cleanup.
You want me to just cancel the, uh?
Motion.
Original motion.
The original?
Yeah.
Please.
Uh, how do you open a word now?
Uh, do we send your original?
Motion to table.
Motion to table.
Second? Okay, call vote, please.
Devono?
Yes.
Criego?
Yes.
Olutri?
Yes.
Shu?
Okay.
Thurman?
Yes.
Williamson?
Okay.
Everybody's giving me off.
Yes. Okay, on to item nine, council reports.
Los Anamos County Veterans Council and American Legion Post is sponsoring a free southern fish fry. Uh, it's going to be this weekend, Saturday, Fort Wooden Veterans Memorial Square from eleven to three. They're going to have, uh, some entertainment. The Mont Carmel Youth Orchestra is going to be there. And the Good Questions String Band. They're also going to have a firearm drawing that's going to take place. And I interviewed, uh, Judge John Moschall and Bill Phillips from the Los Anamos Veterans Council today. And, uh, they're excited. You know, donations are encouraged because it takes a lot of revenue to maintain a building of thirty-one thousand square feet. So I think it's a good thing. They, they put a lot of good events on it, so. It was a great interview, and that's all I have to report. So.
The only thing I have to report is that we went down on a visit to Pinion Canyon and, uh, at the end of the, they, they were there for maneuvers for a month, and we were there. Uh, three of us were there for the end of the maneuvers, but it's, it's such a delight to be around members of the, uh, armed forces. They're so pleasant, so polite, so willing to assist. And it, I mean, the technology and the advancements that, that they, they have is simply amazing. It was very informational. Um, it's just nice that the city was able to cooperate with the Department of the Army and have that maneuver site here in Los Anamos County, because I think we're doing a good, a good deed by doing that. Also, I didn't get a chance. I don't, I have a problem speaking up sometimes, but in regard to Mr. Riora, um, he and I go way back, and I'm taking, I'm doing this as a personal note to him. He was a high school teacher in, when I was in high school. We're not going to say how.
How was?
Excuse me. He was a very rough character guy until you got to know him. And he was soft, very soft and very compassionate. And the friendship that I started with Mr. Riora in high school uh, went for till almost several months before he died. And he always came and asked me to sign his petitions when he was running for office because, uh, it meant something to him and it meant something to me. But it's the character, the man, and he did, uh, he sacrificed and worked a lot for this community. And I, I'm, I'm glad that we're doing the reservation.
I went to an ARPA meeting. Uh, hasn't changed in ten years. Just like I had never lived. Uh, there was really nothing at all concerned for the city. The only thing that they were going to do is, uh, they are evaluating the distributing lines of, uh, all the cities. Uh, they're going to have a guy, a team come in and evaluate, see if they're, could make more efficient, see what's wrong, uh, just kind of fix things because nobody's ever done it. Lamar, Trinidad, everybody. And they put out an RFP, and the company will come in and they'll let us know. But that's the only thing they're really concerned for.
So they're kind of doing the evaluation of all the resources?
They're going to look at everything, all the distributions, uh, substations, everything. And it's just, ARPA's doing it. They're paying for it.
Oh, good.
Yeah, we don't have any issue with that.
So that's good to know. Good.
I agree with, uh, Councilwoman Criego that the Pinion Canyon maneuver was, was really, uh, gave me a lot of insight into, um, what they do in this part of the state and how well they prepare our soldiers to go and fight. It gave me a lot of confidence, and I'll never forget getting to sit next to Karen on a Blackhawk.
Should we got a picture of that?
We do have a picture.
We do.
Really?
Pictures. Um, and then the other thing I would just report is that I've been to a Trickers game. They're doing great. You know, a lot of the players are back this year, uh, who almost won last year. Their next games in town are, uh, next Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday against Tucson. And Tucson ultimately won that, um, championship last year, so those, that ought to be good games.
Uh, Parks and Rick will be in a meeting on the twenty-first. I'm sure we're going to, I saw Jared, but I guess he must have cut out. I'm sure we're going to talk about, um, pickleball and golf courses and stuff like that. Uh, I encourage you guys to come to that meeting in particular.
What date is that?
Twenty-first.
And you holding them here?
Uh, it's going to be in Stacy Creek.
At what time?
Six. It usually runs about at that.
I had a, uh, council of government meeting. Um, there's, uh, not anything major to report the effects Trinidad. But we did have, uh, President at the meeting, the mayor, to read a proclamation for Deb Hartman. After thirty-plus years of service, um, council of governments, um, head, well, the children's programs there. Uh, she had a lot of her family come in, some of them quite a distance, I think. Um, and it surprised her. It was quite an emotional time and very well received. But I just wanted to mention it here to just give Deb another shout out. And thank you, Mayor, for making that such a memorable event.
Uh, I think I mentioned this last meeting. Actually, when Monument Lake, they invited us to go up there and to see what all they've done. Um, I mean, they've done a fabulous job of, uh, the new parking areas. The rooms are just fabulous. Uh, they have good food yet, and they still, uh, anyway, it was, it was. The other thing that was interesting is they now have someone that's there on site that's doing massages and acupuncture, and I forget what else.
Oh.
Yeah, yeah, and acupuncture.
Yeah. Right.
Wow.
He's upping the ante on that. They have, they have, of course, the, the new dock that they haven't placed, and that dock is just, I mean, Monument Lake is quite a resort. And I look forward, and I think the money that we have allocated the last three years, I think, has, um, been put to good use. And he's done just one heck of a good job.
I asked him in the interview if he would resurrect the monument, and he said we'd have to get a crane to do that. But that's not too far-fetched.
It's, considering it could be done.
Yeah, it could be done. Uh, I also, uh, went with Anisa, and I want to thank Anisa for going with me. And she prepared, uh, the awards to the middle school and high school teachers and also to, I think, the, uh, uh, was the, the other school, the Fisher Peak?
Fish, yeah.
Yeah, they have teachers up there, so it was nice to give those awards out to the teachers for the work that they do. Also, went and read a proclamation for Mental Health Month, uh, Month to the Health Solutions. I did that here because, um, had to get it done before the end of the month. I also went, uh, listened to a Southern Colorado Rail meeting. They have those periodically. And there's just an update as to what's going on with, uh, the rail. And actually, tomorrow, they're actually having a rail meeting at the college, and I'll be attending that as well. And that's, uh, two o'clock, I think, yeah. I also went on last Saturday, did a presentation. They had the historical group, the Echoes of Trinidad. They had about fifty-five people signed up for that. And, uh, there were people from not only locally, but board members were there. People from Rantone, people from as far as Colorado Springs were there. So they had people from a lot of towns, and it was really good to see, uh, you know, the, what they had planned. They did a really, really good job of it, so, um, thank them. Reach out a good hand and say thank you for everything they've done with that. Because it was a Saturday, and I think a Sunday morning event is what I think is what it was. One thing I want to mention is I know we had a changeover in the tourism and have a new, complete new tourism board meeting, but I just wanted to, uh, say thank you to the previous tourism board members for what they've done. Uh, they did a good job, I think, and unfortunately, none of them have really transferred over to the new tourism board. But I want to say thank you to, extend and say thank you for, uh, the time and the commitment that they gave, uh, to the city of Trinidad for that. Mr. Ruber?
Uh, just a couple, and I'll be as quick as possible, but some good news. Um, so we were awarded two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars from the State Historic Fund um, for exterior stabilization of the Fox Theater. So continuing to make some efforts over there. So that was a really big win for us. Um, I'm happy to announce, we had our golf course RFP that we issued. We received four responses and signed the contract last week with a company called Sirius. They're out of Georgia, and they're eager to get started to come help work with us and the Golf Association. We're going to partner with them on, on doing the best we can to come up with a great solution for our golf course. We also signed the contract to do the National Community Survey, uh, with Polco. Um, and because we're a small town, they're doing a pilot program right now for basically the same price of the survey. We get a survey platform that we can use for the next two years, which is tremendously robust and allows us to do whatever surveys we want. There's probably over a hundred CAM surveys that they have for different topics. So, um, Anisa and Audrey are involved in this, and I think we'll have some great tools under our belt. But I just want to remind everyone, the, the National Community Survey is a statistically valid survey sent out to a random sample of our population. Residents who are not selected will also have the opportunity to fill out the survey in a non-statistically valid format so we can get their responses as well. But it's going to be a great indicator of where we're at as a community on quality of life, infrastructure. We did the survey in twenty sixteen, and so we have some historic data to benchmark on that. So really excited to get that going over the summer. And then last, but certainly not least, I just wanted to give everyone a little bit of an update on the, uh, area-wide planning initiative. Um, Keely and I met with Brian Gibbons, uh, this morning to get kind of a, a brief on, on what he's focusing on. And the one highlight I wanted to mention, this will come out in future discussions, but he's already taken the Greenway Foundation's renderings and ideas for the Riverwalk and incorporated that into the area-wide planning. So I know there's some questions on how we're going to tie all of these plans together and make sure we're communicating. Uh, I think that's a, a great, uh, you know, step to, to demonstrate that we're going to do that. Also, uh, we have the RFP out right now for hiring a strategic planning consultant. And a lot of the staves that's being set by area-wide planning, Greenway Foundation, all of that will be provided to that consultant to synthesize that into a, a strategic planning document and create some actionable items for us. So lots of really good things, busy times, and we're excited to move forward on these projects.
Could we get from the Greenway Foundation, I know when they did their presentation to us last week?
Yeah.
Uh, there were some of the renderings. Can we get some actual renderings that maybe we could have here in City Hall so that we, you know, people can come and take a look? We can take a look and see, get, you know, get a second look at it.
Yeah, I believe I sent out, hopefully, the links to you all for the actual, uh, documents. But yes, we can get some of those printed and have it available here at City Hall.
Like that, uh, to put up.
Yeah, sure.
Mitch Jones?
Thank you, Mayor, Councilmembers. I don't have anything to report on it. But I just also want to just mention on the, the Joe Reorder proclamation. You know, I, I want to say rest in peace, uh, Mayor Reorder. It wasn't that long ago that he was here and presiding over these, these meetings. And he was a wonderful mayor. He, uh, he was, um, very difficult as a person on many occasions, but he was as nice and kind and really loving as he was stern and difficult and, uh, and it just really impossible sometimes. And I just want to say that on a personal note, um, we would have executive sessions. We had John Benotto, Anthony Mette, and Mayor Reorder, and Councilman Shu. And without going into content, of course, we would have arguments during executive session that I was sure were going to be fistfights. And we had, uh, some, some pretty exciting times. Anyway, so, um, I, I just wanted to say that, and, uh, I, I miss, uh, him as a person. And, uh, we've been lucky to have a great mayor to take his place. Don't want to take anything away from you.
No, likewise, you know, known him for a long time as well. And so you're on town, you know, saw me church all the time. And, uh, who's just, you saw you, he always was happy to see you, so.
Yeah.
Will miss it. Matter of fact, my, uh, my wife is good friends with his sister and had a conversation with her this evening.
Oh, wow.
Motion to adjourn. So move, second?
Second.
Call vote, please.
Devono?
Yes.
Criego?
Yes.
Olutri?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Williamson?
Rico?
Yes.
Eric, can I see you for a second?